I want to thank you all for being here for tonight's regularly scheduled council meeting. If I can ask you all to rise for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation we give him by Rick Malagani. He is the pastor at Fairhope Christian Church.
Lord, as we gather here this evening, we come to give thanks for these leaders who are giving themselves to guide us through this most difficult time. We ask for your wisdom, for your strength, and for your presence as they continue to work on behalf of all citizens during this time of trouble. Lord, we also seek your help in overcoming this pandemic, which has taken toll on so many of whom we left up in our prayers this evening for strength, for peace, and for courage. May your will be done this day and forevermore. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate you being here. Okay, council, before we get to the first item, which is to approve the minutes, it's been requested to add several things to tonight's agenda. One of the things that I'd like to add is a resolution which overturns the three resolutions related to postponing public hearings and also public participation. So you should have that resolution in front of you, and that is to basically rescind those resolutions and move forward with public participation beginning tonight. So I want to add that, you know, after the council comments, to open the public participation, and also have it at the end of tonight's meeting. Actually, I think we do that right before council comments. Is that right, clerk? Does that go between the mayor and the council comments?
Between it.
Yeah, okay. And so the only caveat would be that that would still be subject to social distancing regulations by the state, but the language is also in there that when and if that's lifted, it would be lifted as well. So let's say that we had a room full of people and they couldn't stay six feet apart. Some people would have to stay outside and maybe come in one at a time, and I would assume we just do that on a first-come, first-served basis. Public hearings, we haven't had to have any, but the planning commission has, and they were allowed to have those that were deemed essential. And this goes back to them being able to have all the public hearings that they need to schedule, subject to those social distancing. The second one was requested to be placed on the agenda by the mayor. This was to amend the plan that was adopted at the last meeting concerning the reopening of the Nick Center, the Museum of History, and the Fairhope Civic Center rentals. And you should have a copy of that resolution. And then the third thing that's been asked to be added to the agenda is an ordinance to establish an emergency water conservation plan for the city of Fairhope for customers or persons who use the city of Fairhope water system. I'll tell you, council, I was a little hesitant on this one. It's a pretty big deal to come before us on a Monday afternoon, but I agree that we can, I would be in favor of putting this on the agenda, and we can talk about it. And since it's an ordinance, you know, we could vote for immediate consideration, or we could table it. I even told the mayor through email today that if we're not comfortable with this, you know, I'd still be willing to have a special meeting since it's related to COVID-19 if we needed to cover it in the interim. So I will ask you to, I'll entertain a motion to amend tonight's agenda to add to Resolution Number 369420, the resolution, which is not numbered yet, that would amend Resolution 3700-20, and also the ordinance to establish emergency water conservation plan for the city of Fairhope. Can I entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add those?
Make a motion, we add the three proposed, or the two resolutions and proposed ordinance to the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, those will be items 10, 11, and 12, and the executive session will go to 13. Adjourn will be 14 on tonight's agenda. Does anybody have any changes, additions, or additions to the minutes from the regular city council meeting, the work sessions, the special emergency COVID-19 meeting? Those were held on April the 27th and April the 30th. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Samud.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. I mentioned in March that I met with each director to review where we were with the budget year-to-date, and at this point, we have postponed a lot of expenses unless we've deemed them very critical at this time. And we postponed acquisitions until we get a better idea of where we are, and I don't think we're going to know for another couple of months. Delayed capital projects, except in utilities, those are still continued. But I knew that any expense in the city operating expense is going to significantly affect the bottom line. So the only things that have been moving forward within the city are projects funded by grants, impact fees, and restore funds. Most, all the utility departments have, we cut one thing or delayed it slightly, but we're very, very busy in utilities, so that's really not been affected that much. Because of this early intervention in March, we have been able to cut and realize $1.279,124, so about $1.28 million. What I wanted to go over was when I looked at the budget, and we kept on cutting and adjusting everything, the purchase of the land, because it was coming out of the different fund balances, was not entered into the budget, and the budget was already presented afterwards anyway. So this is how it's going to affect, and we may need to cut more. But we are now seven months into the fiscal year, a little over seven months, which is 58% through the year. And without the purchase, which is what I was looking at at the budget, without the purchase of the parkland, let's see here, get to the other screen. The revenue for both situations is 62% of projected year-to-date, which is 4% over a projected budget for both the purchase and without the purchase of the parkland. But expenses without the parkland is at 46%, so we're 12% under for a projected budget for this. But because the purchase of the property goes directly to expenses because of the fund balances, we are, expenses are at 4% over, actually, that's not right, it's more than that. I copied and pasted the wrong thing. I'll get this to you. But it is 4% over projection. So that would leave us year-to-date with a projected deficit of $1.5 million. And it's not affecting our operating because it came out of fund balances, but I need you all to be aware that that was not put in the budget. The budget that you all had that we were editing from was without the purchase of the land. And this is kind of what you are going to be talking about here shortly. And Jay Whitman is available to call in. I'm not sure if he made it here, but he said he would call in to answer details within this plan. But where we are with the city of course growth, too, we, on weeks when we have a drought, we're at nearly 100% capacity. But we have this coupled with the fact that we have a lot of development that has happened over the years before this term, where lines were put in by the developer and they were not, there was no oversight. So two of the residential areas that were without water this weekend, for the most part, it is due to the fact that these lines were built out of substandard material. And the water department is constantly fixing this. And so that he, Jay, told me that if we reduce some, during drought, reduce some of the capacity, then the force won't continue to break these lines, and he can explain this better than I can. This is not a last-minute plan. This has been put together for a while now, and now that we've experienced so much this weekend, I don't know if you all have heard anything, but we had a lot of breaks, and it took all weekend to fix them all. So you can look at the details, and we can discuss it more when it gets to the agenda. But I do think conserving water in a three-phase plan will help us greatly and will prevent customers from being without. I wanted to thank our planning department, our planning and development department. Some of you all may not know, but they have been working really, really hard the last month and behind the scenes to really communicate with so many citizens. There are several different developments right now, and just really taking the time to engage these citizens has paid off, because I do think they're starting to realize that this, they have a hand in, you know, the future of what their area looks like with the comprehensive land use plan. And I just wanted to thank them for taking the time to do this, because I know they're busy, and this is hard to do sometimes. And lastly, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I'm going to read the following proclamation. There's no one here to receive it this year, but whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, and there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency. I felt like this was perfect timing, just so you all know. Whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and with efficient treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support to prevent, and to prevent mental health, prevent the need for, this is not spelt right, and I'm sorry about that. Then therefore, I Karen Wilson do hereby proclaim, May 2020 as Mental Health Month in Fairhope. As Mayor of the City of Fairhope, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, and Fairhope to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. All right, public participation. If you'd like to comment on items, well, item four is a public hearing, so if you want to speak to that, let's hold off until the public hearing. But if you want to address the council on items five through what would be now number 12, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no one, because maybe no one knew this would be on the agenda, close public participation for agenda items, and remind everyone that there'll be another opportunity at the end of tonight's meeting to address council. Council comments. Councilman Robinson.
No comment.
Councilman Conyers.
The only comment I had was related to our stores and restaurants trying to open back up. I had heard from a few citizens that had an idea of possibly offering some additional sidewalk space, or even blocking off some parking spaces to allow restaurants to maybe increase their capacity outside, because I think we've only got about four or five weeks that you'll be able to eat outside. It'll be too hot, but to maintain a 50% occupancy and be six feet apart, and some of the restaurants in Fairhope, I think they would probably only be able to get about a 20% occupancy and keep people properly socially distanced. So I don't know if that's something we want to look at offering to them, just to have some kind of flexibility to expand outdoors, maybe on Friday, Saturday night, busy times, just, you can't shut down downtown parking during the week or during the day, but I thought maybe that's something we ought to look at, just to see if any of the restaurants think it would be beneficial and propose something. So does anybody have any thoughts?
I want to let Councilman Brown answer that, because I called him, what, a week or so ago, and said, should we, this was before, you know, the 50% rule, and wondered if we could put it out on public property, which would be our streets, and let them, and Robert had some thoughts as to why that may or may not be feasible, but we can entertain it, but I think you have to be inclusive of not only downtown, but maybe throughout the city, I would think, yeah. So Robert, I'm going to let you take over and remind me what your thoughts were when I mentioned it to you.
Yeah, when you called, and kind of some of the articles that were being floated around, we're closing the streets down, and I just didn't see how you could do that and serve each restaurant the same, you know, throughout the city of Fairhope. However, I mean, if we were just talking about allowing the parking spots in front of each establishment, I think that's a good idea. I mean, if that's all you're going to be doing, you're not going to affect the flow of traffic, and everybody's got the same opportunity. If they got parking spots in front of their business, allow them to block them off on Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And I don't know if the restaurants would want that, or if that'd be very appealing to customers, but I know, for example, Seaside Beach was pushing sort of an alfresco, let's just plan on dining outside as much as possible during the summer, and so they're kind of pushing some of that restaurant seating outside to try to get the volume up for restaurants, because, I mean, it's, obviously, it's been a really tough couple of months, and people are not going to pile into, well, they're not going to be allowed to, but even if they are allowed to, I don't think people would cram into a tight restaurant right away, so.
Hunter, I see you out there. Do you see any pitfalls to that from a legal side of things?
As advice to the city, I would consider all harmless, you know, I think we have to look at that from the public works, and if there's barricades, we can, you know, but in theory, I don't see a problem with it, and how we accomplish that and get to the details, I think matters.
And Marcus, when I ask him a legal question, I was kind of thinking in terms of our, you know, our zoning regulations or anything such as that, we can allow, you know, the legalities of it, as far as, all harmless is a great thought, but is there anything that, to your knowledge, I mean, we give people the use of the streets all the time for different events, so.
Yeah, we teach them, you know, Marcus, what, you know, one of your other, or shop or stay on the lake and hold, you know, but since they can't have more than 50% of their occupancy at hand, you open the sidewalk for them as well, or is it just restaurants? And is it just Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
I don't think they could serve, I don't think that they could serve alcohol on the streets either. They couldn't leave, you know, they couldn't go out there and have a glass of wine with their steak in the street.
And I'm not sure if the health department would come into play.
That's kind of what I was wondering, this.
Well, and I do think there is a fairness portion there, that if you allow restaurants and stores to do it, and then there is no parking, and we're allowing it every time. So how that works. And Councilman Brown, I think, some of the solutions that people are doing is blocking off a certain block, and if, you know, maybe that kind of becomes pedestrian-friendly, and maybe something similar to the farmer's market, which we're in a certain area that if restaurants do this all over the city, you can't come in and do that. It would be a challenge.
I think unless it's in front of your business, it would be challenging.
Sure. There's, there's, it would be challenging, box lunch, you know.
During arts and crafts, you know, a lot of people use the sidewalk because you can walk anywhere. I do think possibly closing off some of the parking and making it equitable would allow for people to just to walk freely and safely, and continue having the parking at the perimeter, but like you said, maybe just for the weekend.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, maybe. So, sounds like it has some merit.
Okay.
This is kind of explored a little more, I mean.
Yeah, maybe reach out to the restaurants and see if that's something they'd even be interested in.
Would you be able to take the lead on that, run point on that?
Yep.
Report back, I mean, if we're going to do it, the city of Fairhope.
Kind of need to do it, yeah.
Because there's no, every day, every day that they can't put more than whatever it is, 20% in there, 50%, they're hurting, so. Councilman Brown, comments?
Sounds good.
All right. You have any other comments?
Nope.
Councilman Boone?
No comment.
Okay. I don't have any comments tonight, I just want to thank everybody for being here, and, you know, I think some of these things, if we hadn't, you know, if we had known a little sooner, we could have put them on a work session to make this go a little bit quicker. But we'll close council comments and move on to Agenda Item Four, which is a public hearing. This is an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, a request to rezon the property of the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation and Linda R. Walker from Residential Agriculture District to an R1 low-density single-family residential district. The property is generally located at 8800 Morphe Avenue in Fairhope. Would somebody introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Hunter?
Thank you, Council President. This property is located at 8800 Morphe Avenue, and is a request from RA to R1 single-family. At the moment, there are two houses on the lot, and as I think you'll hear me repeat, I don't like to look at existing plans when we talk about rezoning. Sometimes you need to think about worst case. But I also like to give you what's being planned right now. So there is a request to split the two houses and allow another single-family lot for a family member. And that was the request, and when we got looking at the details, the way the current houses are situated, it's hard to divide that, even though it's over seven acres. Just with the setback requirements, RA is agriculture, cultural lots that require three acres, 200 feet almost frontage on width, so, and 25-foot setbacks on the side, and that kind of presented some challenges. So the request is a rezoning to R1, which allow them to split the property. It is subject site here. The colors here, if you can look around, green is other architecture, sorry, RA agriculturally zone. Adjacent here is R2. A lot of down, a lot of around town is R2, so that's the type of density of that zoning. There's PUD, R3, that's kind of some of the, what's around the area. So R1 is, there's no heartburn to us at this density, even in its worst case, if it was fully developed. This is the site. One house is covered up by the call-out. This is the other house. And current plans, we don't know exactly what this will be, but conversations of a house to the rear. Now, there are two houses on a single lot. That's against our zoning code. So by zoning this, we, it would create a non-conformity, two houses on one lot, and there's living quarters above the garage. So one of the requirements that we would propose if the council chose to approve this was a condition that it's a map amendment, so the zoning change wouldn't happen, we wouldn't, we'd kind of sit on it for a little while until the subdivision case came in to clarify that. So it's a little bit of a chicken or egg. We had to make a choice, and I think this makes the most sense. So if there is a comfort level with the council to approve this, then they can come back with a subdivision. And that is the motion we are, or that is the recommendation, approval of this subdivision, indicating a single-family residence on a single lot before we make the actual map amendment. If that never comes to us, this map amendment's never made, and we might come back and repeal the ordinance, ask to repeal the ordinance if we need to, but don't foresee that happening.
Now, what, how did the planning zoning, was it unanimous to recommend approval?
Yes. There was really no heartburn on this one. We had a couple of, there's, on the map, there, it shows a right-of-way to the south here, Fleming Road. That is not an approved road, and kind of a paper road, and there's some maybe potential drainage, drainage issues right there. We'll look at that in detail at the subdivision phase, but that was the only comments during the planning commission meeting.
Counsel, let me go ahead and open up the public hearing. I want to say that now, this public hearing was scheduled, it wasn't put on the agenda because we were going to pass that resolution earlier. It was already planned and properly advertised, so I guess is meeting the minimum essential function. So I just, this wasn't on here, put on here, and not proper notice given. Do you confirm that, Clark?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this matter, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, I will close the public hearing, and unless somebody is just really itching to make a motion for immediate consideration, we'll let this lie over to the next council meeting for final adoption. Agenda Item Five is final adoption of an ordinance of annexation of James Lloyd Thomas and Diane Starnes Thomas property located at 23545 Second Street, Fairhope, Alabama. They wish to annex into the city, and I believe they meet all the stipulations, they're contiguous and can do so. This is Second Street, this is in the Montrose area, so we've already had the public hearing on this. I will request a motion for final adoption.
Samud.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clark, will you call the question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item Number Six is a resolution the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a mutual aid agreement between American Public Power Association and the city of Fairhope, which facilitates rapid short-term deployment of emergency support prior to, during, and after an incident or disaster, and fulfills a federal policy for reimbursement of presidentially declared disaster expenses. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Samud.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is pretty standard operating procedure. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item Seven is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Ryland Underground Services for professional boring services to connect natural gas 650 feet to a new subdivision tracery with an not-to-exceed amount of $7,800, which is an unbudgeted service. I'll entertain a motion to approve the expense.
Samud.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments? I'd just like to say, anytime we can provide services to new customers, we keep paying our utilities, so I'd agree with it. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Item Number Eight is a resolution. The city of Fairhope approves the procurement of materials and labor by an outside contractor to build 17 trash receptacles with flower box tops to replace the existing ones for the public works department. Flower boxes will be procured from Seal, Sealy Quality Construction and Renovations with a total cost of $13,475. I don't know about you all, I got a couple of questions about this, but I called Robert, who's a contractor, and looked at the material costs and the labor costs, and he said it seemed pretty reasonable, so kind of looked at it, and, you know, they are pretty intricate, and while it seems like a lot, I just rely on our resident builder. Councilman Brown?
I've never built a trash receptacle, but.
I saw you building an Adirondack chair, and it probably was $1,000 worth of labor in that, and it wasn't as complicated as a garbage can.
Yeah.
Probably $2,000 at your cost, but it just, like, a normal person's cost would have been $1,000.
No comment.
You're what you pay for, don't you, Robert?
All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve this expense for the trash receptacles. Samud.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just, I was going to bring up, whenever this did come before us in the future, was whether or not we should have some of these designated for was whether or not we should have some of these designated for recycling. It seems like we ought to have some recycling bins in town, I don't know if people would use them, or if they would just wind up throwing trash in them, it'd be more hassle, but it seems like we ought to have, a, a percentage of these ought to be designated for recycling bins, so I don't know if that's something.
It's a great idea, but you know, I, I would, I would venture to guess that it would be everything but recycling thrown in there, most of the time. I mean, it sounds like, you know, if we could have some double bins where we had garbage in recycling.
Right.
And I still would say 50% of it would be, you know, household garbage, but that's something we could consider.
I mean, if we're about to build them, would be the time to consider it. Is if they could build a double, or if you just alternate from trash can to recycling on some of the busier areas, I mean.
Can we look at that next go-round, since we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, that's fine.
I get you and Robert to build them. There might not be much help, but I come out there. All right. Anybody want to comment on that?
You could put a sign on a few of them that say recycle, and just do a little test experiment and see.
Yeah.
Do that.
Especially if you could see through it, I think that would help with the recycled, like lattice work or something, because I mean, it's just plastic bottles and cans.
I think they try that recycling at the ballparks, don't they, Jake? I don't think it goes too well out there.
Yeah, if you can see it, for some reason, you can get away with it. But if you.
If you can.
See that it's cans and whatever, I think that does a little better.
I'll let you head up that, too.
All right.
Got a busy week ahead of me.
Yeah, I saw the volume.
We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number 9 is a resolution, the city council authorizes and approves the hiring of the new water and superintendent to allow the current water and super, water and sewer superintendent to work with and train the new employee prior to his leaving in August 2020. It'll be beneficial for the city, as well as the new hire, temporary position will expire upon retirement of the current superintendent. Any questions about that position? The mayor's here, should we answer any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve?
A second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Item 10 was a resolution that was overturning those resolutions, and I'll bear with me, and I'll read this real quick. Whereas on the 13th day of April 2020, the city, do we have new lights in here, sync them?
Does sync them.
I mean, you can put them down, so.
Okay.
I got them down.
I'm having a hard time seeing them tonight. Whereas on the 13th day of April 2020, the city council adopted Resolution Number 3679-20, a resolution, the city council hereby suspends public participation for agenda and non-agenda items till further notice due to the shelter and place order by the Alabama Department of Public Health and the Governor, and will expire on, once the order has been lifted. And whereas on the 13th day, thank you, I thought I was losing my sight. Whereas on the 13th day of April 2020, the city council adopted Resolution Number 3680-20, a resolution that due to the limitations on public gatherings and social distancing protocol pursuant to advisement of the Alabama Department of Public Health and orders of the Governor, all public hearings of the city council, planning commission, and board of adjustments and appeals are postponed until further notice prior to resuming public hearings, and an announcement will be made by the city council at a future meeting. And whereas on the 27th of April, the city council adopted the resolution, which amended Resolution Number 3680-20, a resolution that due to the limitations on public gatherings and social distancing protocol pursuant to the advisement of the Alabama Department of Public Health and orders of the Governor, all public hearings of the city council, planning commission, board of adjustments, and appeals are postponed until further notice unless the public hearings entail essential minimum functions. Prior to resuming public hearings, an announcement will be made by the city council at a future meeting, and since we're at that day right now, whereas it is desire of the city council to repeal these resolutions to allow public participation in all public hearings based on the Governor's new state order, to not limit public gatherings but to follow social distancing protocols set forth by the state of Alabama, and any social distancing protocols set forth by this body will expire once the Governor adopts a state order lifting these protocols. Now, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, repeats the same. I will entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Y'all bear with me just a minute, I want to, I want to address, I, I had a citizen that left me a voicemail, and they said that, that it was against the law to not have public participation, and I just want to make it clear that it's completely within the right to not have public participation. State statutes clearly, they give you, you know, you, it's not a right to have public participation, the council votes on it, you do have to have public hearings, but, and you know, and we didn't have any, we didn't vote on any motions that required, or ordinances that required public hearings, so those were postponed, but I think that this citizen, and I'm talking to the citizen right now, I think was confused between public hearings and public participation, but public participation is, is a privilege and not a right, so I just, I just kind of want to make that clear. If y'all ever hear anybody say that, you'll know that, and Mr. City Attorney, can you concur with that?
I agree.
Okay, all right. All right, thank y'all. Item number 11 is a resolution, states be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope. The Resolution Number 3700-20 is hereby amended to reflect the following actions that shall be taken pursuant to the revised order of the Governor, and adopts the mayor's recommendations along with the following changes contingent on further orders of the Governor, the following shall open on June 1, the James P. Nick Center, there's a phasing plan that you see there, the Fairhope Museum of History, and the Fairhope Civic Center rentals, and volunteers will be welcomed back on June the 20th.
June 20.
And Mayor, I, I want to ask you, I think that Jessica had a request to this be put on there, so I don't know if she can call in, but wasn't there something specific to seniors that was in the Governor's order?
She did, I think, look at it for.
So it was, so that wouldn't be opening on May the 18th, is that, Lisa, does that sound correct?
Yeah.
That is why, that is all why all of these are being moved to June 1st.
But, but I believe that it could be moved to May the 22nd, and, and so my question was.
That's only if she lifts the order then.
Pardon?
That's only if the Governor lifts the order then.
That's if she lifts the order then.
Right.
Okay, so that, so you're telling me then that has not been lifted, that port, these, these three centers are still under those current orders then? Okay, the, the reason I asked is because I have had some people requesting we open them sooner, and so if it had been lifted on May the 22nd, or was going to be, I was going to say, could we have, or would we go ahead and move it up to the 22nd of May?
If we were going to have another council meeting, I think that's why we did it, too, because I think as of the 18th, some of this was going to be re-reviewed.
Re-reviewed, right.
And that's why we just, she matched what, you know, her latest, her latest press conference was on Friday.
Okay.
So that's really the only thing that was affected, everything else is still planned for the 18th.
Okay, so if a citizen, like, with, with, one did, and I didn't reply, this was coming up, and I knew I was going to ask these questions, we can tell them that it's still pursuant to Governor's orders.
Everything we're now is, we're matching the state guidelines, and they are not opening playgrounds either yet. That's not even, there's no date for it yet, just an appointment.
Okay, all right, very good.
The very last page shows you what's still remained, how we were planning it.
No, that, yeah, but that's our plan, I just wanted to see if it mirrored.
It mirrored.
That, that plan, okay. All right, well, thank you. Counsel, I will entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, counsel. Okay, item number 12 is an ordinance to establish an emergency water conservation plan for the City of Fairhope for customers or persons who use the City of Fairhope water system. Is, Terry, you're not here to speak to that, are you?
No.
Is there anybody that can speak to this ordinance, or, let me have somebody introduce the ordinance first.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. So, I mean, this one is a, you know, I understand that there's an emergency need here, but there's also just a ton of language in here, and like I said, I'm not comfortable with this right now, and that doesn't mean I wouldn't be comfortable with it in a day or two, and I have time to digest it, but I just got it this, late today. It's a pretty big, you know, it's a pretty, pretty big piece of legislation. I'll do what y'all want, counsel, but I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable.
I just, I wanted to hear more from Mike, or whoever, whoever could speak to this, Mike or Jay.
Yeah, I mean, there's, what, six or eight pages here? You know, I said emergency meeting, this is not COVID-19 related, this is drought-related, so we can't have a, you know, we didn't have a.
We can still call a special meeting, couldn't we?
We can still call a special meeting, but we have to meet, you know, we have to meet like we're meeting now. Counsel, I would be, we need somebody to brief us, and then we would have to, if we were going to pass something tonight, then we would have to suspend with the rules.
He's going to call them, I mean, he's, he had to get a link for teams.
You would have to.
I don't believe we're saying that, and there's no explanation or anything of this.
What now?
There's no explanation or anything of this.
I, I emailed.
In order to suspend with the rules to pass it.
Is he calling in, did you say he's calling in, Mayor?
Yeah, I did, he was sent a link just now to call in.
Counsel, I, I would be okay calling a special meeting.
I would be, too.
And we'll try to do it ASAP, y'all want to do that? And then, so, you know, we've introduced it.
This being the only thing on the agenda.
It'd be the only thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. You guys okay with that?
Set up with it.
We'll call a special meeting on this, and then we can get the details, otherwise we're going to sit here and wait.
Yes, I'm just checking.
Clark, there was a, there was an item that we spoke to the treasurer about to pay a bill, I don't, I didn't catch it until now, I didn't see it on the agenda. Oh, we decided we didn't have to, because it was covered under the prior resolution, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, yeah, I know, I just, it just dawned on me, it's covered, okay. All right, with that, we'll open the floor up to public participation for non-agenda items, if you'd like to address the council on any other matters. I will say that the council is going to go into executive session, we are not going to take any action when we come out of that executive session, so if you want to address the council, just come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, I will close public participation. Do we have a letter, Clark? For the executive session?
Yeah, I thought I printed it. Let me go print it.
Jack, I've got a question about that water conservation, the mayor mentioned developers using substandard materials.
That's what he was going to explain, because he has all of the language.
Yeah, well, that, that goes back to the Water Department, I mean, they set the regulations on what, what is to be installed.
There's, right now, we don't have inspections of the work that happens with these developers, we give them the guidelines and the minimum standards, and because they're hiring their own engineers to do this, they're the ones that are putting it in, and, and this particular development.
But if they meet our.
He explained what happened with that.
They don't get approval unless their design meets our standards.
Right, but.
And then if it's found out that they.
For us to oversee it, you're going to have to have an engineer.
No, but if you go out there and you, and you dig up where the, a pipe is.
It wasn't just about, it was substandard material and the way it was laid. So, I mean, it's, it's definitely something that an engineer would have oversight over, and even if it wasn't in-house, then we could build a developer for that, but right now, and it's been happening for a long time, but the engineering department would do that and more, and we talked about how that could be paid, just like building inspection and other things like that, because right now, we are allowing developers to self-inspect, and we're paying for it, a lot. This was all in a, during our, during our meeting.
Man, I'm not quite following that, man, I've been in this business about 30 years, I remember self-inspecting, the engineers come and do the inspection, and then sign a paper statement.
But it's, it's the engineers that you hire.
I'm sorry?
It's the engineers that you hire, we don't hire those engineers. When you have an inspection.
It's not a, sign a piece of paper that states that everything was installed and qualified.
He, he said that, but usually when you start having the problems, I mean, they're long gone, and in this case, they're not in business anymore. I mean, it's, it's happening, trust me, it's happening.
Do you know if it was a, an older subdivision with?
It's, I mean, and it's a lot, it's not this one residential area.
Okay, so just multiple scenarios, not just one.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
But you don't know if it was prior, you know, maybe stuff that was built to a prior code?
No.
Okay. Newer, newer construction?
And, and this is, I want to, I was pulling the recording verbatim, exactly what I went over, that the, the in-house engineering department would do, because we are, I mean, we have a building department that does inspections, we don't allow a developer to hire a building inspector, their own building inspector, to do their own inspection, I mean, we are doing that in this case, though. It's, it's definitely a blatant omission, and it will continue to happen.
Y'all just give us a minute, Lisa will be back with the letter. Okay, so I'll read this on behalf of Marcus, it says, as a city attorney, Marcus E. McDowell, I hereby request the Fairhope City Council go into executive session, based on the Alabama Code, to discuss the consideration the city is willing to offer, except when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, leaves the market value of real property, because the discussions could have a detrimental effect upon the competitive position of the city in a negotiation, if the matter was discussed in public. As city attorney, I hereby request that the city council, the City of Fairhope, rise from regular city council meeting on Monday, May 11, 2020, to go into executive session. City council shall be in executive session for approximately 20 minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council shall return to the city council chambers to resume the regular city council meeting, and as I stated, that will just consist of an adjournment, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll reconvene, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.